If you would like to, okay, we have Stuart Adams here. There's a chair right here. If there's a chair right over here, Brad, if you'd like to come around and Brett while the purpose of this.
We have an act of sex.
We got it. We got it.
Yeah.
So you want to work with this?
Yes, that's, that's what we've been planning on for our work meeting is this.
Why don't we pass, we thought we could do some, something to take home because I know you don't give enough paper. Just pass those around and we'll probably get a few of us. Jason, yeah, if you know where that. You can keep them going, right? Jason, you want to start us?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to. Thank you for inviting me to come back again. I know that seven. I spent some time with the council several months ago as we were retained or commissioned to, to do an economic and fiscal impact in our associate post project. And I think I'm primarily here, I think, to address maybe some questions if, if you have some. What's prepared here has been my responses, in part, my responses to some of the questions that I believe have been out there that have probably come, potentially it could be from the council, potentially it's from residents and others, but wanted to provide this opportunity to, to visit with each of you guys and and just visit about this a little bit and, and make sure that our study and the integrity of our study is understood of how we approached it and what the findings were. So with that, there's four main points here. For reference, thank you for putting that up.
I'll get it. It likes to display here, but not there. We'll get it.
The, the full study, as you'll recall, several pages, we looked at economic impacts relative to the the size and breadth in terms of what economic benefit is created here, but the, the more important element of this was really the fiscal impact, which is what's the financial benefit or cost relative to this if you're looking at through the eyes of a, a community legislative body? So the city, primarily the county, and also the school that's created the state of Utah, et cetera. And so I, I think the first primary thing that we came away with, and I just wanted to reiterate here is I think there's some misguided maybe information or interpretation of the study, but somehow the commercial aspect of this is what creates cost or net negative to the community when, in essence, the commercial development really is the crown jewel of, of the project in terms of financial benefit to the residents and to the town of Hooper. Now, why is that? Well, as we go into the analysis, you know, we can paint that picture a little better, but what commercial activity ultimately brings is a, is a plethora of the tax base, including the sales tax, which is the primary vehicle here that, that generates benefit far above the cost of the actual services for service. For instance, the marketplace.
Do you want to go to, you want to go to the last page of the study that, that very complicated? And maybe I actually, that, that's kind of hard to read. So if you go to this next page, we actually pulled some of the Hooper numbers out there. And these come, these numbers on the next page come right off the desk. If you, but we act, you can see everybody in there, state of view dot Hooper. And so if you look at this top part of this graph, you'll see thirteen million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars over there at the end for sales tax for Hooper. And you probably can't see it on there, but it's on there on the very tight end side. Uh, it's a total of all twenty-two years of sales tax revenue. Can you get it over there?
How many years was that?
Well, the, the, the commercial doesn't start for three years.
I can point that, yeah, just scroll over there.
Five Hooper.
So it's right.
It's hard to say.
Right here.
How many years is that number? That's, that's. Study, if you go back to sales tax, the other end of that study, they have, you know, that, that sales tax fine, you go, go to far left now, all the way to the left. Okay. If you look at the city, the first sales tax numbers, if you look at this sheet, down on the four lines, start at four hundred and one, eight hundred and nine. But there are no sales tax for three years. So that sounds fixed comes in over twenty-one. Does that make sense? And then, uh, then the next line down, I'm starting at the top of this sheet. If we could find it there, if you found the city property tax, it might be over the twenty-five years or twenty-one years is three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. That's total. And then we.
It's this, what's this line?
Okay. Again, it's a little hard to read when you're looking back and forth. So I put it on it, you put it on the sheet.
Three hundred and sixty-three.
And then if you go down, the energy tax and their little error in the energy tax is not a big deal, but find the energy tax with the city as in another. Whether we're right there, there's a, it's thirty thousand dollars. It should add a growth to it. But anyway, we, we, Jason, I talked about that should grow with inflation because it should grow. But didn't grow, but anyway, the total of it is, uh, what is it? Sixty-two, it's right there. Okay. So we totaled all the Hooper benefits, okay, right there. It's fourteen million over the period of time. Five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty. Does that make sense? Follow me. And then we tried to separate this. Jason, talk about residential versus commercial.
Yeah. So my, my first bullet point, um, that I just wanted to reiterate here is, is commercial development will never, at least in terms of how the, the current tax code is set up, uh, set up in the state of Utah and how sales tax, property tax, the various taxes are distributed, commercial development will never cost the city money. There are always a net, uh, at least this particular type of commercial retail development will always be a net generator of tax revenue to help offset the cost of projects. The reason we see cities that try to build, um, uh, an economic tax base around multiple types of land uses, including commercial, is for that very reason. Every city is its incumbent upon them without any commercial tax base. You either have one of two things. You have property taxes that have to go considerably higher than they are now in order to provide the same level of services to residents or lower your level of service. Start cutting out services that you provide to your constituents. So, um, I don't know if that came across necessarily in the fiscal impact study, but I think there's some question of, well, is the commercial what's costing us? Is it the residential? Well, it's the residential. The residential regardless of whether you put commercial in, residential is still bringing in less revenue per unit than what the cost is to offset that with your public services.
And go back to the very beginning. There are now down there, there's revenues, but then there's expenditures, okay? And when you look at the expenditures, how, how, what percentage, can you guess what percentage of those expenditures are residential or commercial? Danny, please.
Well, we've, we've run the analysis as much as ninety-five percent residential and five percent commercial to as low as seventy, thirty, meaning seventy percent of the cost, uh, incremental costs associated with residential versus the commercial.
So if you go to the graph, what do you run that through it? If you look, take the sales tax, let's go to commercial and follow the sheet. We're starting here for four hundred and one. And here, no five, it's about that eight, which is how it's, it's all the sales tax. And so it produces the thirteen million advisors. If the five that by twenty-one years, that's six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars on average again, that's worth ten years. I would have, you could say, uh, that present value, but in the average. If we aggressive and take five percent of the cost and, and that's three hundred and forty-three dollars, they're, they're forty-two thousand four hundred and one, sixteen thousand. And you come up with a net of thirteen million over the term of the twenty-two years or six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We move down to the residential. And if you take the, give the residential a hundred percent of profit tax, even the commercial profit tax, you give them the full three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of revenue. Uh, that's fourteen thousand dollars a year. You give them a full energy tax of six hundred and sixty-two, and that's that thirty thousand dollars that you could. And then you give them the expenses of ninety-five percent. You could see that's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, and you can see there's a net for residential and you could argue whether those are exact numbers or whatever, but different net negative for residential, for a percent. But even with the residential and the commercial, there's a, we need the residential for the sewer listing. That may be aggressive, but at least it's a, it takes what may be.
Jason, can you speak to, uh, in your study, um, the expenses? Um, those are general average numbers that communities would potentially experience and are those necessarily real expenses or are those expenses that maybe are already expended with current staff?
And that goes down to these three questions on the bottom. Maybe you want to address all three of those.
Yeah, I think, well, let me address the question because I think that is a good question. For purposes of our model, um, we feel like over the time period, once you absorb all of that, then it very accurate in terms of what the projected costs are. But if you look at it incrementally, year over year, that's really not how the expenses are going to be incurred, for instance. Um, but back the first part, sorry, the first few years, when you have residents moving in, that incremental cost that we're putting there is basically probably conservatively projected high, meaning we put a lot more expense on that, even though you probably won't, you, you would probably continue to serve those residents in the first three years with no additional staff. Staff will stay the same.
So go up on your line, you show two thousand, three thousand points, because there you go, public safety, parks, you're going to build another park. I don't have it. You have to hire another park person, but go ahead. Look at, talk about those.
Well, the, yeah, so that's the point, I guess, of what I'm answering there is, um, for our model purposes, we've incrementally tried to program in costs. The reality is, is we don't know when another person or employee or, you know, those types of costs are going to be added. We do know over time they'll be added by virtue of the magnitude of the project and so forth. So what we do is kind of straight line and amortize that over the full body of the timeframe. But when asked about this, you know, I says, well, that's misleading. If what you're looking at and saying, well, residents are coming online and we're generating a little bit of revenue, which you can see very little, but it's offset by all of these expenses because of the way we've done it. Then the bottom line, sorry, if you just shift down to the very bottom where we show this negative fiscal benefit, that's of everybody, not just Hooper, but it's incumbent upon Hooper as well. That's misleading because if, if what people are thinking is, well, the negative cost associated with that, one is a real cost, which I'm saying, no, it's extrapolated for purposes of taking it out over the twenty, twenty-five year period. The likelihood of having new staff added during the first two or three years, probably unlikely, but we didn't zero it out. We put an incremental cost in there.
So they have placeholders, but not actual costs.
Well, they're, they're, they're hard to determine whether they're actual costs. I can't determine when that trigger point is with, uh, you've got a hundred and seventeen residential units. My first year of absorption, I might have thirty of those units. I don't know, thirty units could tip you over the scale because of all the other residential development and things that you have. There's no way of knowing that. So what we've done is incremental to do that. Yeah. You also could have.
That's a question. So if we go for the city costs up there, let's go back. And let's say you take public safety. So you calculated that twenty-seven hundred by taking the total amount they're paying for public safety, dividing that by the number of people in the city, and then getting an amount per person and then extrapolating that to what you're going to add.
Yeah.
So that, that, that is a nice mathy way to do it, which is not realistic at all.
Well, it's not, but. Yeah, same thing. If, if you do look over the period of time, I can show you regression analysis is really what we ultimately do here is you look at a thirty-year period, what I projected costs are going to be pretty close. So total cost, what won't be close is the year by year components.
But, and then the first four years, is any of that commercial?
Well, no, there's no commercial, anything that's in costs related to the commercial side are all going to be defrayed by building permit revenues, impact fee revenues, when they pay it, or any of the other planning permit fees, et cetera. Those are costs that, that you will incur, but should be offset by the fees that you charge. There's no other costs associated with the commercial.
So, so let me, I want to understand this. So in the first four years, there is no commercial. So you have, there's no cost because the commercial starts in year three or four, whenever you have it up there.
Right. All those costs are associated with the idea that the residential units have a per a household number of people living in them, and that's the per capita cost associated with what you just described in terms of.
So if you take, for example, it's easy to see on the state level, you take health and human services, twenty-four thousand.
Right.
What you're doing is saying, we'll take the whole population of the state, buy that into the state's cost for health and human services. That number will multiply times the number of people putting in Hooper and that's your cost.
Yes, and it's not exactly linear. So recognize that I'm not treating it a hundred percent as fixed cost.
Right.
I'm treating probably in that particular case for the, for the state, I'm treating forty percent of it as fixed cost, sixty percent of it variable. So I don't do a full cost allocation as, as a full cost. I don't have it right there, but I'm using the population of. Maybe if you scroll up.
Before you go, let me just say one other thing before you leave that sheet so you can see it. But the, the people that come to the commercial aren't not going to the park before they buy their groceries. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's the people living in the homes that are going to the park. And so it's the residential that is causing you to have to go apart. That's, that's, so that's why, that's why seventy to ninety percent of the costs are residential costs. They're not commercial costs.
But you're, but you're still considering the sale revenue based on the number of people who's going to shop there. So it has to be, as that revenue increases, there's got to be more and more residents that shop there. Is that, so what, what percent are you showing every year Hooper has to grow in order to maintain this sales revenue that you suggest?
So I got some data from the staff and I heard that West Haven is the second fastest growing city in the state. I've got to confirm that, but that's what I think, right? But West Haven, but, but so, so this sits on the border. If you're only going to, if you're going to lock the doors in the commercial and say it's only Hooper, that's one thing, but you're going to have people come from multiple different cities. Does that make sense?
So let me answer that question first. I think your question is, uh, we, we programmed into here an expectation of sales tax growing at two and a half percent per year based on the population growth, um, uh, I think it was less than a percent. That Hooper's population would grow less than a percent per year.
Bobby, let me make this analysis. Using your system, every subdivision that they approved here that is selling.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I guarantee it's the case.
Well, does it matter if it's in this broad background, right? But whatever it is, property tax would make a difference.
Well, sales tax, there's point of sale distribution. So if you're not growing with the overall pot of the state, then you're decreasing your, it becomes the minimus at some point because your population's not growing compared to the state, but you can get fifty percent distributed based on.
Got a call from North Ogden, embarrassed, we can use this tax message. Was their sales tax decreased? They'll be called, they said my sales guys decreased because my population's.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the way the formula works. Um, we could argue whether the is a safe formula of how sales tax is distributed is correct or not, but, um, this is based on how the current formula works in the state. And so, yes, there is some benefit of residential when it applies to sales tax, but it's a diminishing, uh, for, for communities that aren't growing at the same level of the state of Utah as it's diminishing. If we were to assume that this was increasing at a higher level, then, um, then there would be a part of that population distributions, part of the pool that would come to Hooper.
I have a question. I know that West Haven's getting a Walmart. It's on the north side. And most of our growth over the last five, ten years is about our side. So at that level of competition being brought to the community essentially on our doorsteps, are those numbers going to be skewed a little bit? Um, because they're within probably fair two, two miles.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm closer, I would be closer to Walmart than Smiths.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, again, look at it from the perspective, we, we were looking at it from an economic fiscal impact study. We really didn't have the full scope. We suggested that there was more scope that you could do here in order in terms of studying the market analysis of that, but that wasn't what uh, the city wanted to look at. But relative to that, we did look at other Smiths marketplaces in surrounding communities with similar types of issues, which is you always have cannibalization that can occur because, um, retail doesn't, they're, they're not respective of boundaries. You know, retail goes where retail goes and whether it's just over the line and it absorbs what some of your residents are already contributing to your retail sales, um, that can go away. That happens in every community. But the ones that we've looked at specific to grocery, neighborhood grocery, uh, retail developments that have mixed use with, uh, with residential. We, we used a trend line that was less than that. We used two and a half percent, which was our projected sales tax growth in there. Factored into that would be those things like you said, well, what about Walmart being built, you know, uh, in close proximity? What about the other grocers that already within a, you know, a concentric circle proximity that would, you know, take some of that demand? Um, so all of that's kind of been evaluated in terms of why we took two and a half percent. Now, if you look at the state for the last ten years, and that includes COVID, which we had kind of a blip that went down for a period of time and then really went up double digits for a period of time. You're still tracking it almost six and a half percent annual growth in sales. A lot of that is coming through internet sales, you know? When you consider as much shopping online that we do nowadays, that, that's probably a, a big contributor, uh, to some of those numbers as well, but I think, um, Stuart's group did question us on why did we use two and a half percent when there's much higher.
Two and a half is low.
There's a lot of statistics that would say that's a very low number. We use two and a half percent because of all the factors that you mentioned.
So if you use two and a half percent growth at a four percent, uh, discount rate, that's going to destroy the value that, you know, if you, it just doesn't. So it'll be six percent is the annual sales tax. But it's, it's a study and we're.
So, and I, so I just want to make sure, I just, maybe I don't want to oversimplify, but on these costs, just because I know there's a lot of questions and concerns about these costs initially, I just want to make sure we kind of understand and I understand. So really what you're saying is, one, those costs are associated with the residential, not the commercial. And that those residential costs frankly are going to happen regardless. Residential is going to.
Unless you don't approve any more.
Right. You would pretty much have to shut down all future residential development in the whole city, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then your, uh, trajectory of your revenue stream isn't staying up with your cost of services.
Right.
So at some point, you're going to have to raise your property taxes no matter what, because you're, you're not growing out of it.
Right.
There's no tax base that you're growing.
And then, and then just to make sure I'm understanding, these are modeled costs, not necessarily actual costs.
Yeah, we did not say, for instance, when you go up top for the city and say, oh, I, I assumed, uh, uh, one PTE, part-time employee to do A, B, C, and D, and this was the associated benefits with it. This was a new, a new vehicle that had to go with it. No, it was a linear regressive analysis that basically said, as you mentioned, which is what's the total cost of you servicing the community based on assessed value, based on per capita and based on other factors. And then we didn't use a hundred percent of the cost. We assumed some of it would be fixed, but some of it would be variable.
Okay.
That's what's built into them.
And then as the consultant to the city hired by the city, are, do you, in your opinion, are those modeled costs, not actual costs, but the modeled costs, is that grounds for not proceeding with the project?
No, no, I, I, I think it's, so here's how I would look at it, and I'm just being really frank on this. If, um, let me put it this way, if you are approving this development and, uh, the developer should close his ears, but my opinion is if you, um, pursue this with a development agreement and ultimately there is the approval to move forward with this, one of the cautions I would have is not approve the retail without having the commercial. Meaning I'd want to make sure that you had the financing in place for the commercial, that you knew it was going to be built and constructed. We've seen a lot of communities that have built the rooftops, but then the commercial didn't come and it put them in this in a longer.
Right, okay. Yeah. So just, and maybe to read, read back, make sure I'm understanding. So essentially what you're saying is, well, one, I would assume you're, you're saying that this project is worth doing. It's a net benefit to the city.
Yes.
Uh, the, the commercial retail component is critical. And you, and as part of a development agreement, you would want some sort of assurances or some, some way of structuring it to say, hey, the commercial retail isn't going to come because that is kind of a whole, that's like the whole point.
To me, that's my final point in this, which is really the economics plus is the commercial. I, I hesitate when I advise communities and cities. I'm really concerned when residential leads out with the idea that, oh, if we build that, then the commercial would come. That's a concern. If, if you were looking at it that way, then I would say I'd make sure my development agreement kind of phases residential. It doesn't allow everything to be built and then I'd, I'd be cautious about how much you, you go. My other comment here is, is the second bullet, which is they serve each other. If you approve the residential, to me, that's a negative impact on your economics. Doesn't make sense to do it when you do have the opportunity of the commercial. On the other side of this, I'm not sure the commercial is feasible without the rooftops that add to the proximal. Your, your issue of, well, who's going to shop there if we've got these other opportunities and so forth? Proximity is going to play a big part in that. Now, not that a hundred and seventeen units is the total rooftop count that you would necessarily need for this, but adding into all the other things, that's a critical component of it. So to me, it's, they're not standalone. To me, it doesn't make sense to pursue it on a standalone basis.
Okay. So kind of, they would, it would be ideal to go together.
Yeah.
And one thing that I want to ask you is, if there's a, if you go down to the expenses, down to the total expenses or whatever there are for the city, but uh, they, uh, this project, the commercial doesn't cost a couple of hundred thousand before it's built. Those are residential plus, right? Four more times. It is one, I've heard that a lot, but anyone that has a commercial spend of process two hundred thousand towards bill. But basically what you're saying, those are the parks and the public works and the demo expenses are all residential expenses before the commercials.
Which will, which will occur regardless of the project.
Which will, in our model, the way we're doing it, probably would occur anyway, even without the hundred and seventeen units because
Right.
it is a linear projection of this is what your cost is going to be to look at.
So.
Yeah, we can, and we need to stagger this and we just can't, uh, commercial and about that sewer and water. They need to be done somewhere. So you've got a couple of years that may be limited residential, a teller commercials, so maybe. They need to be done somewhere. So you've got a couple of years that may be limited residential, a teller commercials, so maybe you go. You know, it's a part of the residential to try to get the infrastructure and try to make the numbers work.
Yeah, my point on the development agreement is um, that's where I would advise to be cautious with um. The entitlement of all the residential without having a very clear indication of when the commercial is coming. Or if it's, you know, those types of components.
Yeah, so again, maybe to repeat back, in the event that the project's approved, your recommendation or, you know, caution is to. Approve conditional upon a development agreement. Is that essentially what you're saying?
That would be my thing. So.
We have another sheet here to go through. Uh, can we go back now to the, there's a C R A, I bet, go back to some percentage. Uh, on the. Okay, couple, how do you find uh the. Don't keep going. It's Stewart should repay, but you're, you're, you're should make right now. You still have my lines. You got a couple of free pages. I don't know where it's at.
You're talking about the tax increment?
Yeah, taxes, so help me out to find it there. Kind of keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. So you might see the system for a matter of something, keep going. So. We're getting closer, maybe right in here. Let's, let's further there, in there, okay? So, uh. Of this, so what, what on this sheet, again, we pulled out. Uh, the, the. The tax increment, uh, and it's a little hard to read in the study. So if you go up there, uh, go off another page, I don't know where, maybe down a page, I want to make sure you pass it. Uh, there it is, right there. So there you see the amount of property tax. This is additional property tax that doesn't exist today. So you build a project and it creates for Weber County a million, it's also up on here, a million three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Or a net present value.
Can I preface this first? Because I just want to make sure we have the concept in mind. You just scroll to one, just a tad higher. Just a little higher and then I'll kind of work my way down. Okay, let's start right there. So tax increment, in the prior page is even more helpful, but there's that graph of what is tax increment? It starts with, you, you start with a taxable value that's kind of your base year. Let's, for instance, let's say that's zero. It's more than zero, maybe it's two hundred, four hundred thousand, whatever it is. And then you get incremental development that builds on top of that, that adds taxable value, property tax.
That's property tax.
So this is the cumulative taxable value that doesn't exist there now, but will be over and above whatever is. Chosen right now on the tax rules that's already there. So we're projecting fifty-three point eight million dollars. The base year value is co- uh structured in there, which is three million dollars on that forty-six acres. It's worth three point whatever million on the tax rules right now. So you continue to receive the tax revenues off of the value of three million. So it's only the fifty-three point eight million, which is the incremental values of all of those projects. So once you get that, then you apply the tax rate. For estimation purposes, what the current tax rate is. And that's what you get down below here, which is the property tax revenues.
Keep going down.
Does that make sense? So now you have this total of eleven point one million of property taxes. You can see your three hundred and sixty-three thousand, which we showed you on that other page over that live. And then if you scroll down a little more, the CRA in our model, we projected that seventy-five percent of it would be participated. By each of the taxing entities, including the city, just property tax. And then you go down now that, with that preface.
So this is, yeah, this is now seventy-five percent. Okay, so that's included a hundred percent. This is the, the value that is used to seventy-five percent when you come into the CRA. Seventy-five percent of the. Yeah, seventy, seven, yeah, we say increment, that's a weird word, but I like to say it's taxes we don't have, new taxes, okay? So taxes, again, if, when you do the project, it's additional tax that you don't have to do. Because you're going to continue to get the old tax regardless. This is just new tax, you know? So you take seventy-five percent of the new tax you don't have, and Weber gets a million three of it. Weber School District gets three million four. Uh, by the way, you went out through, you can read them all there. There's two fire districts. I don't understand that. Maybe you do.
One is for O and M, and one is for their general obligation bond that they passed to build fire stations.
So is this the map goes in your development or is that the twenty-five percent? Yeah, so, so there's, in addition, there's six million, you can see down their total, there's another twenty-five percent of that's probably entered. So I'll do two, no, you think, yeah, okay. And so the total, that net present value is almost four, the actual numbers are six estimated. So the agency gets that six million, it's taking it right out of that sheet, you can see it there. And then you come down, and Jason explained this. I don't know why the eighty-five, ten, ten, walk through that, would you?
Well, some of it's statutory, so as a, as a city council, um, if you were to create a, a community reinvestment agency. And then create a project area for this forty-six acres. The state says, that, that's great, you can do that. If the taxing entities approve interlocal agreements and are willing to do the seventy-five percent. We mandate though, that you can't take a hundred percent of that and put it into whatever. And that's where these buckets have been specifically called out. And so the redevelopment activities are just really what's left over after the state has said, you have to at least put ten percent towards housing. So that's a state requirement.
What is that? What is that ten?
It could be affordable or moderate income housing. It could be, um, it could be for infrastructure that supports affordable or moderate income housing.
Like the sewer lift station.
Sewer lift station potentially, if there are affordable homes or residences that are able to uh benefit from the sewer. Treatment or, excuse me, from the sewer lift station. Um, sometimes communities don't have a housing plan or don't have a really good affordable housing uh approach. So they'll uh team with the county to do it through a county housing authority. Or sometimes even the state through the Olean Walker Housing Trust Fund. There's other ways to deploy that. But what they say is ten percent needs to be allocated to support moderate to affordable housing. Uh, for those of incomes that would meet that, you know, that criteria. Doesn't have to be in housing subsidy per se, or even building housing. You could use it for public infrastructure that supports those needs as well. And then administration is uh more of a technical way in which. The, the code says, we know that the agency are going to have requirements now. Once you create a project area, you have to report annually. Not only do your, do the budget, like you do with your city council, with the general fund and so forth, you have another budget to administer. But you also have annual reporting requirements you have to do with that. And so what the state has said is that you can use up to five percent of that increment. To defray the costs that you might incur to manage the agency. That makes sense? Then the, uh, the balance of that is what they say you can use for project development according to the act. So there's certain things in the act that you can do it. Public infrastructure is probably the one that it's most designed to do, so sewer lift station will definitely fit within that.
So the bottom, uh, numbers on that, the, the new per city total tax. Uh, property tax rate is three hundred and sixty-three, I'm there somewhere, okay? A thousand dollars over the life of twenty-five years. The CRA increment, seventy-five percent of that is around two hundred thousand. So the new per city property tax revenue, you get a hundred and seventy-five new if you do a CRA. And for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar investment from Hooper. Hooper receives six million forty-seven thousand dollars for three point eight million present value. To build a lift, lift station. They receive that from other entities. You can see them up there, Weber, Weber School District, Weber, sorry, District, Weber, the state of, whatever. They get six million dollars. And they still get another, the city gets three hundred, two thousand dollars to run the agency. Plus the hundred and sixty-five additional profit. So two hundred thousand dollars for six million is a pretty return. In my mind.
I think the only other maybe bullet point that I didn't cover was just my third one of the four. Um, was the idea of funding the sewer lift station. So when, when we were asked to look at this, also from the feasibility perspective of this, we looked at rooftops. As being an important part, we also looked at um, the idea of. The, the, the reason we have tax increment or impact fees or pioneer agreements, all these types of maybe vehicles to. Fund a, a, a bigger project that's regional in nature and then have a mechanism to pay for it. Is because it is a barrier to project development finance. Meaning the financial institutions look at this overall project. You saw fifty-six, sixty million dollars in total cost. And the banks are going to lend on that, or commercial entities are going to lend on that based on certain, you know, loan to value ratio. But when you increase the off-site public infrastructure cost, it also has to come, you know, as part of this capital structure, capital stack. Sometimes you start getting in that area where it doesn't pencil. Meaning, you got to either go get more equity, which costs a lot more capital, then you can't get the leases, the lease rents or the rates or whatnot that you would need to offset that. And so it creates what we call gap, a gap. There's a gap financing, and that's really reason why CRAs are used. Other tools, um, public infrastructure districts where they assess property to put those in, that's another way. Impact fees where you charge, you'd have to charge everybody impact fees to collect and offset the disproportional amount that the developer would pay. So the way our study looked at it, um, is we assumed that the sewer lift station would provide more capacity, more volume. Than just the hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet of retail. And the hundred and seventeen residential units, we assumed that that would open the capacity to much larger. And so when we did the analysis, we looked at the different ways in which that could be defrayed, that cost. And we suggested, well, yeah, if, you know, there was a mechanism like tax increment where that revenue source could be, you know, captured. And you use that to pay for the sewer lift station, then it would offset that additional cost, which is a barrier really to getting this capitalized and completed. And so that's how it was looked at. Now, we didn't do.
Pays our share of that.
Right, you pay your share, but, but what, what I'd say our feasibility analysis didn't look at is, we didn't look at the capital. Structure per se. We don't know what the financing mechanism, all I can go off is the experience that we've had in other areas where we know what the capital stack looks like. We know what those additional costs um, would, would mean relative to the development. We also didn't really spend a lot of time with impact fees, but. Impact fees are another way that you could maybe bring down the, the amount of tax increment. But the concern is, how long does it take to, to pay that back? And then you've got the issue with the commercial lender of saying, well, I don't, you're not growing very much. Or it's dependent upon growth that comes in, and so how do we know that those impact fees are going to come? Whereas the tax increment, once this is built, this is going to come, right?
One of the things we've done, uh, and they could do as a city council is loan the money to the lift station. That comes through the tax increment and then the impact fees that come later could pay off that.
Loan.
That loan.
Yeah.
And, and in that way, the money, yeah, then that way, the money comes back through the city.
Yeah.
Council and, and they can utilize it as direct to either pay off the, the, the loan, so to speak, or they could use it for other benefits.
I'd like to see that, um, I would, you know, I highly advise them that you, you know, uh, take some time to. Uh, research and understand the I F F Ps, so the impact fee facility plans and the impact fee analyses that you have to go through. Um, there's statutory requirements all set with those. This is a unique sewer lift station, so I don't know how regional it is, but it could be considered citywide. But those elements you have to address in terms of, well, who would pay the proportional share that isn't the developer's?
Yeah, well, so, and sorry for me to recap. I just want to recap a few things, make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, right? So, one, in your opinion and assessment, the cost of the sewer lift station, which we know is needed for the development. And we've already established that the development would be in that positive for the city, right? So in order for the development to have it, we need the sewer lift station. And the costs of the sewer lift station are beyond what the project can bear on its own. Is that accurate?
Yeah, from a, from a limited review perspective and more from a comparable perspective of light projects. That we do know what the capital structure is and we've been able to ascertain.
Right.
You know, two or three million dollars of outside costs are, are not insignificant in a fifty or sixty million.
Right, essentially what you're saying is if, if like, it was asked of the development to, to completely fund the sewer lift station, that's beyond. What would be reasonable and possible to make it actually make sense, financially.
I don't think there would be incentive for the developer to do.
Okay.
I don't know why the developer would do it, because the equity, additional equity that you'd have to raise, you'd have to pay back at twenty percent.
Right.
More.
Right, so then what you're saying with that, right now, is the CRA is an appropriate mechanism to help make that work.
Because it, there's a barrier for the development in this case. And so it's, it's twofold. The question I think you're asking, is a great question, is, is it the right develop for our community? So first and foremost, uh, uh, we did a, a very cursory review and said, if, if you remember the study. We did a cursory review and said, based on your general planning, master planning and all of those elements, this seems really consistent. With areas that you identified as commercial notes or things where, you know, you didn't want to change your um rural setting. Or some of the elements, but that general plan was pretty clear in terms of identifying that you needed commercial tax base. And there were kind of certain areas to do it. So based on that, we, we said that really makes sense of where you're considering to do this. But there are still barriers and the infrastructure was a big barrier.
Right.
He said, unless you can overcome that, we don't know that there's.
Well, so, yeah, so you're kind of, you're saying a couple of things. One, project is good for the, the, the city and community. In your opinion, it aligns to the general plan and the plan for this area.
Yep.
The costs of the sewer lift station are beyond what the project can bear on its own. The CRA is an appropriate mechanism to use, make is possible.
Yeah.
So Jason, uh.
Can I, can I, can I just respond to the last point?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe it's an appropriate tool to use. We also said that the feasibility of whether or not the other taxing entity was, would participate is not what we studied, right? So I didn't go in to try to say, I've done all kinds of due diligence with Weber School District or Weber County or anyone. And they've definitively said, oh, yeah, we're definitely going to participate and so forth. So with that caveat, yes, I think it's completely rational. It makes sense. To me, it makes sense for the other taxing entities.
Mm-hmm.
Because three million dollar value versus fifty-three million dollars, all the sales tax, all the taxes. Is clearly beneficial to all of the taxing entities, but politically feasible analysis of whether or not they'll do it, I couldn't try to.
Right, but what you're saying is there, it's, I mean, likely that they would want to participate because it's.
I would think, yeah, yeah.
You mentioned the paying of fair share of the station.
So is that just the impact fee or? Said it's two and a half million dollars. What's your fair share? What did you guys budget in for that?
Whatever the, the, you're going to have to determine what the costs per house are. For the project area, not the project area, but the sewer lift station area. And I, I don't know where that certain, right, where the services, the entire city, half the city are funded at the city. But somehow you're going to have to decide what area that covers, how many units it covers. And if we build, let's say it's a thousand units, we build two hundred of them, we're going to have a fifth of the, of that cost that we need to pay for. Because we've got, just here to give, so we pay our proportions.
So the way, yeah, the way, the way an I F F P, so an impact fee facilities plan would be done. And I'm just going to isolate the sewer lift station, is the engineering design of that would then determine, well, how many ERUs would that serve? So equivalent residential units, and that would be based on average or peak demand or, or some relevant thing that they could say. Well, this is generally what each unit takes. So once that number is defined by an engineer, certified, et cetera, then you spread that cost over that many units. So let's say that there. then you spread that cost over that many units. So let's say that their ERU because, because Smith's is going to be more than just one ERU, right? Because they've got a, a much bigger, um, you know, service coming in, you're going to have some coming out. Residential, they're smaller units than single family, so they might be less than one ERU, but let's say they come out to two hundred ERUs and the total capacity is determined at a thousand. Well, they're twenty percent. So to me, twenty percent of the two point five will be their proportional share. The rest of it, you'd need to figure out. That's how I develop my IFFP and IFA. That's what I would be collecting from the other eight hundred ERUs.
And the units you're built, they pay for. And so residential, some city issue comes in or an individual user comes in, they pay that.
Or other commercial to take advantage of.
Well, and maybe related to that conversation, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the CRA, the funds that go into the CRA, which help pay for the lift station. Those funds are coming from the development, the new, the new revenue, the new tax, the new taxes that are from the development. So it's not like there's new, it's not like there's some costs.
In other, yeah, I think that's a good point. So in other states, they actually, um, we have legislation instead of remitting that, paying it and then remitting it back is they just forego. So it, it's, we don't have that in the state of Utah. So these taxes have to be paid. This is just more of a concentrated way of focusing those specific revenues to an issue within that area.
So, so the six million is for the lift station. And how do they make this project area bigger? And they do, if they want to include additional, if they want to spend that for, that, they don't want to spend two million on lift station, they want to spend all four million. And do some other projects. I, I'm not sure I understand that. Be given some advice or give you some.
Well, you can't. So if it's public infrastructure, the, the statute, the CRA Act allows for public infrastructure to be spent outside of the project area, provided that you as a legislative body determine that it benefits the project area. So let's say there was something on the periphery that's not in the tax increment generating area.
A water line.
But you're going to put some other infrastructure that's going to benefit them, but it's also going to benefit this. That could be, you could use that. Storm drain, waterline, roads, uh, curb gutter. You know, you name it. Uh, you also have the argument of, remember the ten percent of it could also be used for affordable housing anywhere in the city. So if you had some moderate income housing that you were meeting those demands and you needed a road for them, or you needed a, a new lift station uh, for them, you could also use up to ten percent of those monies that way. So that would be bound to just the project area.
So assuming that you use four million, build a lift station, buy it out of this one. Then where, where would it be an impact fee? Because it's already paid.
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing is the possibility that you would collect impact fees and increment is collected annually. So that five million doesn't come all upfront in terms of the tax revenue, but it might be monetized upfront by whoever financed that. There's a great question. What we would do in the case of using impact fees is we would credit that. Or we would correct it. As impact fees come in, we credit against future tax income. So in collecting, if we had a twenty year project area and we're going to collect six million dollars over that life. But the impact fees as they come in are going to defray, what would you say, eighty percent or and a half million dollars. If those come in, then we reduce the tax increment by that. So we're not charging twice.
Or you could, or you could spend that elsewhere in your project.
Or spend it elsewhere.
You could put other, you, infrastructure improvements in, roads, storm drains.
And that's usually more how it's used.
Yes.
But, um,
Then we use the seventy five.
Yeah.
So am I right? When they look at this and say it's, it's two hundred thousand dollar develop, uh, investment for roughly six million, four to six million dollars of
Yeah, that's, no, that's a fair way to look at it. The other way I think really to look at it is the way we presented it, you know, before, which is the net impact or benefit to the city was seven point one million. The net benefit to Weaver County was that, um, two million dollars. And the state was that fifty, fifty one million, I think it was. Excuse me, eleven point nine million. To me, that's the, that's the return on investment. That includes the tax increment already taken into account. So each of the discussion points that we had, we've already taken the tax increment as a cost out of our net numbers.
Right.
So we're programming is, as a cost. So you don't have tax increment and it's defrayed another way, then that would add additional potential benefit to well, to everybody. Yours would be limited because your property taxes certainly low, but.
So essentially what you're saying is even with the CRA, there's still a net positive.
We got twenty minutes, city council. Let's see, right, I have some questions.
So I'm switching gears just for a minute, just because I want to know the risks too. I mean, we talked about all the the positive things, uh, per se. So when the five, ten years down, bro, you can't afford a Smiths and it doesn't, it doesn't work, you know, just out of the population base. Too much competition, whatever it is, what does it look like then? We still owe that money, right? Well, you, the lift station. Well, yes, depending on how that's financed, yes. So you're right. So the risk of who monetizes and pays for the, so, that's the interesting thing of the, why do we use net present value? Well, net present value is used because we're trying to determine how do you monetize something, right? So sometimes it's monetized by the commercial end. But the commercial lender, instead of just getting lease revenues that come from Smiths and the retail and sells of the units, et cetera. They also have an added income stream now that comes in the form of tax increment. So if you went down the path of CRA, you'd also enter into a development agreement where you would give that portion of the tax increment with the developer and then it would be their responsibility to go out and fund that. So that, that three million dollar cost is paid for upfront. If that's the case, then the risk on there, right? Now, if it's done through, let's say it's a public infrastructure district, which is another kind of quasi tool that's been allowed by the legislature where it's no longer the city's responsibility. You have no, that there's no legal recourse. It's not a component unit. It's a standalone, uh, entity. But they could issue bonds for it and then the risk would be on the bondholder. Because the bondholder would be buying bonds based on the assessments or the tax increment that would finance the transaction. If the city, so this would be the point that I think you're getting at, if the city were to finance, uh, whether you use capital project funds to fund it all upfront, whether you loan something internally to do it, or whether you go out and bond finance. The risk then is that the tax increment doesn't materialize at the same level that you thought, or it goes dark, gets turned over. I don't think there's a bigger risk on the property tax size because there's continually taxes that would be levied and you're ultimately going to go through a tax cell. And worst, worst case scenario, the, the, the government ends up owning that, you know, a, a building that has some value, but I'm not as concerned from a risk perspective on the property tax, but you do bring up a good point on the sales tax and the other benefits here. If this goes dark, um, those benefits that were anticipated don't come through. So then your, your risk is if you finance the sewer lift station, um, then you do have those payment obligations.
If the city.
If the city finances.
If it's a separate entity or if it's a developer.
Developer, then it's not the cities. And that's why cities have used public infrastructure districts or uh, use the commercial, uh, lenders to provide the financing, even though they're not as cost effective. Your ability to borrow is a lot better than what the commercial rate would be for.
But the discount rate changes when a commercial developer borrows, they borrow at a higher rate than the city. So the resident that comes in will finance us less. Because you can't borrow with it, just like pretty high, like five percent, you can't borrow so much. So each of the entities have a different, uh, uh, rate that they pay. So that's part of what we look at too, it's never making a difference. The property tax, uh, is, is a lean on property. And it's in front of a first mortgage. A second mortgage is, a first mortgage is in front of a second mortgage. So if something if, if something goes dark or gets foreclosed on, the property tax and wipes out the other, the first mortgage and the second mortgage if it gets sold. So property tax is really, really stable.
Yeah, property tax is not, I think it's a great question. Property tax would not be the risk here, I believe for the city. I do think it is the sales tax and clearly the sales tax.
We're not, yeah, we're not using any sales tax for the CRA.
No, you're not. But I think in terms of the cost benefit analysis, a lot of the cost benefit is coming from the sales.
We are, right, but it, it's that if the funding is done through the, through the tax increment, funding just property tax uh, and it's done through the developer, I don't see any risk with the city out. And I don't see much risk with the developer because property taxes.
Yeah, not risk as much as the picture on that last page of you don't get the net benefit that you anticipated going into it. But yes, I agree that it's not a it's not a risk that you're going the other way. It's a risk that you're not going to get as much as you had thought you were bargaining for.
So when I asked the population, which this, I, I saw it was about fourteen.
I think.
Yeah.
Maybe in there, okay.
That's what I saw. So when do you expect these fourteen thousand people to kick in to give you these numbers?
Oh, the fourteen thousand? Can you just scroll through that again now? Cause I, I thought it was more like ninety nine hundred or nine thousand current populace. So I think we're using current population and then growing at, at less than a percent a year.
Okay, so, so fourteen thousand would be what we'd be looking at in.
Maybe in twenty years.
Okay.
The state's growing at about three percent.
Yeah, I mean, West Haven is like, that comment's been made and we can verify that. We did some analysis on that. West Haven has been heav-, yeah, heavily growing population wise, you know, double digits.
Yeah, but basically what you modeled is current population with almost no growth, meaning very minimal growth is still sufficient to make this all work.
To make this work.
Very little growth, but tough for the growth outside.
Yeah, like population just over nine thousand, I think is what we, and then growing to about fourteen thousand by twenty thirty.
So go back to Bryce's question. If, does that make sense?
Yeah.
As long as it's based on profit tax, whether it's the city, a developer or a separate entity. It's not likely the property tax is ever going to go away. So it's going to be paid off for the risk if we don't get and then don't get revenue.
Because there's no sell, just those questions, there's no sales tax involved in that.
So.
Never have asked. Correct, we've, we've only looked at the seventy, um, seventy five percent. I think it was a fifteen or twenty year project area. We did get informed a little bit, um, shouldn't say I didn't do any due diligence regarding the CRA. I did talk to the Weaver County Development Officer, Stephanie, uh, Russell. I did have some conversations also with County Commission Gage, um, in particular. And I was told, well, we've got all kinds of policies. We've got frameworks in place in terms of what we could do, but when I ultimately told them what is tried to be accomplished, it sounded like the county in itself was supportive of that level. So that's why we use the seventy five percent, whatever period of time. Um, I think they're probably more inclined to do it in an area that you've never used the tool than an area where they've been using the tool a lot. Meaning I think they're saying, you know, those areas are kind of self-supporting already. We don't need to do more here. I think they do feel like they'd like to, you know, participate and help.
Yeah, probably. Uh, he's about the numbers, um, from the LRB study first came out and we tried to digest it, understand it, look at it, you know, we were going with that number that wasn't the net present value. And when we understood what that meant.
Okay.
Explain that to us. So the MPB at four percent was what we've always gone off of from that point. And, um, the current, um, presentation up there, actually on the last page, shows, shows still a hundred and seventy five thousand per year over twenty five years is what we kept in there at, at one time. And so just today, we've had this discussion where you come up with some numbers that are different than the LRB study overall. And now we're talking about four hundred and twelve thousand dollars um, per year over twenty one years. And so we've almost doubled, more than doubled the average net revenue after paying residential.
Can you use that present value?
And, and from that discussion to this discussion, we've come up with all this money for the year. And I'm kind of confused where all that just came from.
Right, well, um, yeah, if I, if I was to take that and digest it, um, certainly real value dollars are going to be real, real value dollars and four percent is a reasonable discount rate. You have to look at that both from the perspective of what will revenues raise and also what will the cost of municipal services go by? Uh, that's the reason we'll use an MPB to try to get it into, into today's dollars. Um, if you look at each year by year, I would say that probably isn't accurate. I mean, it is a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, maybe in today's dollars. But by the time you get, you know, ten years out and so forth in real dollars, it's going to be four hundred thousand, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars.
Um, I think what we did is we just took an average, worked for twenty five years, added up the averages per year, and also where we got four one seventy five, I don't know if this is.
Yeah. Yes, another way to look at it is your current budget is how much?
Current budget?
Current city budget.
For this?
No. City budget.
Yeah, it's about four million.
Four million, how much of that is sales tax?
One point five.
So when we say four million, how much of that is your utilities?
How much do we get from the utility tax or how much do we pay our utilities?
You said you have a four million dollar in your budget. Is that just the general fund?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So how is the revenue broken up? My understanding was you have three, you only have
There.
A very little amount of property tax.
Very little property tax. Sales tax is our biggest chunk probably.
Right.
And it's maybe a couple of hundred thousand a year.
Utility tax now that we have is probably four to five hundred thousand.
So how much of your sales tax are you getting mostly? Out of the four million?
One point six.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's quite that high. I know our property tax is only about two hundred thousand. I can't re-, I don't know. Like I say, I've got, it's right back there in my other bag.
So your sales tax on average is going to be almost a third or forty percent of what you currently have with one development.
Four million dollars. Three point eight.
If you're, if you're generating one point four or five or six million dollars in, in current sales tax, this one development is generating, starts around four hundred, five hundred thousand.
Yeah, we're talking for a year and they're talking for five years.
No, I know.
Well, right, well, an increased population. I mean, I thought, that's the part that's thrown to me that all these people aren't going to move here like the day this bill.
That's an annual amount. That's that, that five hundred thousand dollar is what, twenty percent of your total general fund?
We collect one percent sales tax as a city.
Right.
Where we have one, we're selling from one store.
You are. That's exactly what we're going to have.
Yeah, fifteen million dollars.
Fifteen million dollars, you know how much this is now in gross taxable sale? Anywhere from thirty two to about forty five million dollars a year. The other retail will probably make up ten to fifteen. Yeah, we're projecting about forty million dollars in gross taxable sales. All of the other ones that we've studied are higher by about twenty five percent.
And the, we've got, has the, just the grocery store retail going to about fifty two.
But again, is that, how long time are we talking and how many people are going to have this spend their money to generate that sales tax? See, that's the part that's still kind of throwing, I
How many people?
Yeah, I mean, sure.
So that, well, that, yeah, I think I understand.
What does our population in Cooper have to be to generate that money? It's not what it is today.
I, I know in your.
Right, right.
Fourteen thousand by twenty.
Yeah, so nine thousand going to fourteen. Yeah, so nine thousand going to fourteen thousand.
So, yeah, so what the model, correct me if I'm wrong, but the model is projecting, so that, that number we're just looking at. It's starting essentially with the current population of Hooper.
Yeah.
And then as we get to twenty thirty or whatever, or, or not twenty thirty, but all those years down the road, fourteen thousand is the end point. But the, but the starting number is sustained by the current, essentially the current.
Which says by twenty thirty.
The fourteen thousand said twenty thirty.
Yeah.
If you go back.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that's correct.
So it's, it's more of a twenty year projection.
Yes.
Yeah, cause that's where I was confused. I, I don't know how we could get to a population of.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, yeah, okay, right. But, but, but again, I, and I think this is important. What you're saying is that the sales tax projections we were just talking about. That benefit is possible with current, essentially current Hooper population.
Yes, that nine thousand within the vicinity that you are compared to West Point, Kaysville, um, several other Smiths marketplaces that all have gross taxable sales that are much higher than what was forecasted here. Yes, it was our determination that the nine thousand would support, um, that Smiths.
Would you say that if your revenues are conservative and your expenses.
Yes.
Are conservative, go on the opposite.
Yeah, I don't know how else to.
Yeah.
Say that.
I, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Well, yeah, it's not the worst case, it doesn't.
So, but, so when everybody's attributing the two hundred thousand dollars expenses to the commercial. If the residential went away, what kind of expenses are in the commercial? Again, five percent, ten, ten, maybe up to thirty, you said?
Up to thirty, but we've modeled it as low as five, as up to thirty. I mean, the, the reality is, is that's why commercial tax base is a component in most every general plan. Because the way that the financing of local government is in the state of Utah, we, we don't get the benefit of income. Local government, right? The state tends to get the main return tax. We only get one percent.
The state that'll go property tax.
Well, state goes, gets no property tax, but as we've determined, property tax really isn't creating too much of, of a benefit. It's really the sales tax and that's where the, it's, it's a funding model, really is, is why this dynamic works the way it does. So if, if, if jobs, if you got income tax, a portion of the income tax flowed down to the local entities. Then I'd be encouraging to go and get jobs, you know, build the data centers and build the, you know, industrial sites and, and so forth. But that, that doesn't, that, that doesn't cover your costs.
So is it fair to evaluate four to five, six to seven hundred thousand dollars in commercial in every year to track down the two hundred thousand dollars expenses? And say that that commercial is three hundred, it's on residential expenses again, every firm, do you evaluate vertical activities?
Yes, yeah, I, I think we've done that in our.
What I'm saying is the residential, you can't, you shouldn't pick out, shouldn't say the commercial only, only produces two hundred thousand a year. Five hundred minus three hundred thousand dollars.
No, I, that's my point. I, I guess I didn't do it very well, a very good job at addressing, uh, council members' question of, well, it's only two hundred thousand. No, it's a lot more than that because you're already in the hole with the development, with residential development, a couple hundred thousand or more already.
Yeah, so you shouldn't be tracking that away from the commercial to evaluate.
No, the commercial's actually getting you out of the red, back to the black and then some. Whereas if you don't do any of the commercial, you're, you, you still have a deficit. In my opinion, you still have deficit spending that you at some point are gonna be able to grow out of. Residential is not gonna grow, grow, grow you out of this. You're gonna have a structural imbalance with your general fund. You will not have enough tax revenue to support it. So the only way you could do it is raise your property tax.
So, so one other question I heard from the council is they understand if you're a lot of commercial, they still have tax demands. So what happens, they move the commercial and they move a whole bunch of residential around and the residential sells out all of the revenue coming from the commercial.
Yep, yep.
That's why Riverdale is, they don't have the residential that needs to be commercial.
It is hard to fathom, but that's the case. But that, that is how the paradigm of funding local government in Utah is because of property tax, sales tax, and the municipal energy tax. Yet, um, you're, you're limited and you don't have any flexibility on the sales tax. Once you've imposed the one percent, that's all the flexibility that you have. Property tax, you've got plenty of bandwidth, literally ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen times the bandwidth that you're currently using. But that was not usually politically a very easy tax to go about and increase.
So it's just on the agenda that I know.
It is, yes, yes. So if you can stay, then we'll, we'll be discussing it again on our agenda because it is on our agenda, so. Yes, yes, if you want it off, we can take it off, but it was.
I don't know where the council is. I, I'd like it on if it's possible to happen, cause if there's not, I think we might, I'd keep working on it. I'd love the council to give you a few corrections.
I was wondering, you know, basically even our planning commission really wanted to have this type of discussion. And they weren't allowed to do that because of costs. But why are we doing that with just us here tonight and the finding commission?
I called Jason and told him to pay it this time.
You what?
Called him and told him to pay it first time.
This, this didn't cost the city anything.
I hope it's provided some clarity. Um, I don't know if it's can maybe address all of the questions or, or, or maybe concerns that you have. Um, but I, this is not a different analysis than, you know, this has been repetitively done. For many, many communities, uh, and, and, and it's not a new outcome. It's a very consistent outcome. And you can look at those now with a track record, you can go back and, uh, you can see that the economics that we've forecasted here, the financials are, I believe underestimated here from what they've actually been in those places. So I, I can't tell you that it's a perfect science. I can tell you that this has been done multiple times. Uh, we, we stake our integrity, we put our integrity on the line in terms of what we believe this outcome is. And, and we do represent municipal government. That's our client base. And, uh, and we do believe that commercial, uh, development in the right context is appropriate for the city to pursue. And, uh, we tried to look at it holistically. We didn't say, doesn't matter where you put there. We concentrated on, well, you know, your general plan did take, um, a lot of effort to analyze, well, do we need commercial development? The conclusion in there was yes, we need it. We don't want it in certain areas, but there are other areas that are appropriate for it. And this seems to be congruent with all of those things. And so that's why our, our ultimate conclusion on this was it's a good development. You need both components. Doesn't make sense to do one versus the other. Uh, and the sewer lift station is an impediment to the development. Um, and that, and that was our takeaway, that recommendation.
Yeah. So yeah, there's your copies. There may be people that want to copy some of that.